Evening, I'm Michelle Hanselman. I'm here on behalf of my family in regards to Proposition Number Eight, or Number Eight on the agenda. And I'm sure all of you have done extensive research into the solar project for Weezer. But my family just found out about it three days ago. And we are neighbors to the actual property to where it's supposed to be built. So we obviously have questions and concerns. We have a brief handout that I'd like to pass out to you for you to review at a later date, if that's okay. And then, the number one thing that I wanted to present is the flood proposition, or flood issue. The water runs directly down from that property directly into my parents' land, and then goes on down Albright Road. And that's anytime it floods. So, if there's any herbicides used, any chemicals whatsoever, any electronic residue, that's gonna directly affect not only our land, our livestock, and possibly our own health, because it goes to our water. We all have wells on that property, and so do all of our neighbors. So that's something we're concerned about, that that's taken into consideration. That's just something that we're really concerned about. That, and I have pictures to prove, if y'all ask for them sometime later, that the water does flood directly on our property. So that was my, can I pass these out?
Sure. Go ahead.
Thank you.
While you're passing that out, I will tell you that, uh...
Thank you, ma'am.
Before we, before we as a Commissioners Court agree to let a project go forward, we're required by law to have a public meeting and lay out all the parameters of what the project entails. And there's certainly time for public comment during that time. So, I mean, we're, we will cut it up, and we encourage everyone to have their say.
Yes, sir.
So, that will occur probably not on the 28th, but maybe the first meeting in March.
Okay.
We had a, we had a meeting this morning with the attorney and the owners, and there's still a lot of unanswered questions. People, people are concerned for, obviously, for different reasons, and...
Yes, sir.
We want to do the right thing.
Wonderful. Well, those are just things that we're concerned about, and hopefully, maybe we could have answers as well. I know you guys probably already have the answers, but just that sometime later. So, I appreciate the time.
Yes, ma'am, you can leave that on. Mr. Klepp, settle.
Commissioners and Judge. Judge Bennett, four years ago, you attended a candidate forum wherein you said that you had a $300 million deal that was going to save the county, replace the power plant. You also said in that meeting that you would not take your first year's salary and instead dedicate it to an economic development coordinator. None of those things have happened. Where are we three years later? We have three solar projects, maybe. We have Tulsa that's in default, has till the end of the year to perform. We have Peregrine, which is a year or so away. And then today, we have Weezer, which, Commissioners, I commend y'all for insisting that, in the meeting this morning, that we have due diligence and public input into that project. Something that was lacking in the first two. So I commend you all for that.
Excuse me, I have to correct you with factual information. We held public hearings on both those projects. Go ahead.
Okay. By the way, you aren't allowed to speak at this point, sir.
Sir, I can respond with factual information.
Only to a question.
Come on, sir.
Please look at the law. Please look at the law, and you're, that's all you can do. Okay, so collectively, those three projects, if they work, would replace less than a quarter of the revenue from the power plant. The, so what would we need? Maybe nine more of these solar power plants? Do we have the infrastructure to support that? Why haven't we been looking at doing something with the power plant? Why have, why don't we have an economic development coordinator who's out looking for things? I know of a, one sole, one coal-fired plant in Texas that's been, and several across the country that have been converted to crypto-mining. That requires large computer server systems that require a large number of employees and are very expensive, and therefore would generate a lot of revenue. Why haven't we approached Luminant about that? Time's wasting. The power plant's gonna go away if we don't do something about it. It's a time that we do something. Why not appoint a citizens' economic development committee? Volunteers who would go out and try to find something to do with the power plant. We have the talent in this county. We have people willing to work for nothing. Let's make use of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. All right. We'll begin with our consent agenda. We didn't have a meeting at the last scheduled event, a last scheduled Commissioners Court meeting, because we had nothing on the agenda. And I had COVID, so I decided that we would not do it, so... We've got a... Our pullouts, we have two sets of pullouts here. We'll begin on the one for 1-622... To... 1-922. First one is on page 10. Commissioner Morales, $543.76. Need a motion to approve that, please?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
One abstention.
On page 12. Commissioner Bruins, $321.82. Motion to approve, please.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye abstain.
Motion carries. Goliad Auto Parts, $378.68. On page 13. Motion to approve, please.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Page 15, Highway Garage, $300, excuse me, $825. Motion to approve, please.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
One abstention.
Motion carries. Any questions about that checklist that's attached to those pullouts? If not, I need a motion to approve it, please.
So moved, Judge.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The one for this meeting, the pullouts. Page 10, Commissioner Morales, $543.76. Motion to approve, please.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
One abstention.
Motion carries. On page 12, Commissioner Bruins, $321.82. Motion to approve, please.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Motion carries. Page 13, Goliad Auto Parts, $378.68. Motion to approve, please.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Motion carries. Page 15, Highway Garage, $825. Motion to approve, please.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
One abstention.
I think I got failed up there. I'll do that again. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
One abstention.
All right, it carries. Highway Garage, page 46, $570. Motion to approve, please.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
One abstention.
Motion carries. Last, page 46, Commissioner Edwards, $536. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And I abstain.
Motion carries. The remainder of the consent agenda, any questions? If not, I need a motion to approve that, please.
Uh, Judge, before we do that, we have on here we're approving budget transfers. Just want to make sure there are no budget transfers. I didn't get any copies of anything.
I'm not aware of any. Are you aware of any? I'm not aware of any.
Okay. I just want to make sure.
You good?
Yeah.
Motion to approve, please.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Item number three is to review and accept the bid for three pickup trucks for the sheriff's office. The auditor called me today and said that there's not a pickup for sale in Texas. I don't know if that's true, but that's what he said, and we need to take no action, because...
None available.
Not available. If no one has any questions, we'll let that one lie. Item number four. Review and accept the inter-local agreement between Goliad County and Educated Service Center, Region 19. Name of the collective is Allied States Cooperative. I was anticipating the auditor to be here tonight, but he's not here. This is a, an organization very similar to Buy Board, and it just gives us another opportunity. It's no cost, no harm, no foul. It just gives us a, another vehicle to make purchases as a county.
And you said there was no annual membership fee?
I do not know that information.
Okay.
I would tell you that we probably don't have to join until we're ready to test drive, test drive it. So therefore, we wouldn't have any...
Okay.
...outlay. I really don't know anything about it, other than what little I talked to him on the phone. And it's nothing more than a blue book, so... What's your pleasure, gentlemen?
Well, we can probably table it till next meeting. I'm thinking to see if there's any annual fees to join their, their membership, if any at all.
I think there is something with Blue Book. I'm just not aware with this, this group.
I mean, there's, there's no, no need to act on it this evening, I wouldn't think.
If you're uncomfortable with moving forward with this, we can table it and have it at the next meeting. Or we can approve to join, whichever, whichever y'all want to do. What say you?
I'm with Alonso. I think we ought to table it till, till the auditor's here and we get a better understanding of it.
Need a motion to table, please?
So moved, Judge.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I had a, item number five, I had a gentleman come in with the Gypsies Motorcycle Gang, and he asked that they'd be allowed to close Church Street in Fannin on June 18th for the Gypsy Motorcycle Club International Crossroads Chapter Rally. I think it's done, something that's done annually. That's really all I know about it. I talked to the sheriff, and he says, "Not a big deal," so...
Yeah, they've been coming to us for the last 17 years to block that road, for that event.
So I need a motion to approve that, if everyone's okay with it.
So moved, Judge.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Commissioner Edwards, update on courthouse monument repairs.
Okay, I got a, I got a letter from the, the company that's gonna do the cleaning, and he sent us, he sent me a list of the, the materials that they're gonna use to do the cleaning and the procedures that go along with the cleaning. And he submitted all this to the State Historical Committee for approval, and that's what we're waiting on, for the state to say we can clean them. Nothing's out of the ordinary with the cleaning. It's very, very mild cleaning. About the heaviest thing's gonna be the pressure washer. That's all I got.
So we're waiting on approval from, I'm sorry. We're waiting on approval from the Historical Commission, is that correct, Commissioner?
Yes.
We absolutely have to have approval from the Texas Historical Commission before we can wash the monuments, repair the sidewalks. We are allowed to change light bulbs.
Are they gonna notify Wally directly, or you, or who?
We'll get the email in our, in our office.
Okay.
And we're anxious to get it done. It's just...
Right, right.
Bureaucracy. So we'll take no action, appreciate the update on that. Commissioner Edwards, discussion of action concerning repairs and use of the Market Street Annex, the old jail, by the Department of Public Safety.
Yes, sir, I have a spokesman with DPS, Troy Albarella, I think it is, coming to speak to us about what they'd like to try to do.
Good evening, Judge, Commissioners. My name is Troy Rainbow. I'm with the Texas Department of Public Safety. I'm the Regional Facilities Director for 43 counties of Central Texas region, to include Goliad County. We have a DPS presence here, along with the game wardens in Goliad County, supporting the taxpayers and all the residents. Currently, we're trying to find out what the way ahead is for our presence here in Goliad County. The building we're assigned to currently is, has roof issues and a subsequent mold present. So we're looking to see what the, what the plan is for our troops here to hang their hats. Of course, we want to give them a good quality of life, as well as the game wardens to, 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 in order to conduct operations here in Goliad County. So I'm gonna pitch it to the court and just to see what the way ahead is, sir, for our team here in Goliad County.
Are you the gentleman I spoke with on the telephone?
Uh, yes, sir, about Octoberish.
He claimed to be in charge of facilities, so...
That's me. Yes, sir.
That may be you, huh?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I won't steal your thunder. I was there when the mold inspection took place. The mold was on the north end of the building, and we found basically nothing in the south end of the building, where DPS and the game wardens are. And I'll tell you, I'd keep you apprised if anything changed.
Yes, sir.
Subsequent to that, we, we decided that we would try to chase the storm chaser that installed that roof, and that has not worked out well at all. Not a big surprise, but we had a fiduciary duty to, to do that. I talked to Commissioner Edwards the other day and told him that we might as well start looking at what we want to do. I think we're gonna build a roof structure. Seems to be the popular plan, to build a roof structure on top of that building, because there was polyurethane put on top of it, and it's difficult to repair that, short of respraying, and then you don't know, so...
And I have a bid from, from, well, I've got two bids that we've looked at, and it's been quite a while back, so...
Yes, sir.
We're gonna have to probably go out for bids again, to see how we're gonna do. But yes, I think, we all think, I believe, is, the solution is to put a roof over that thing. And with that concrete and the way it's cracking under there, it's gonna be real hard to find the crack, the way it travels through, through there to get to the floor.
And also, gentlemen, from the, from the department's standpoint, that building is very functional for what we do for Goliad County, and we would like to, to be still in that building, but depending upon, you know, the, the roof repair and the mold ratification. Like I said, we're, we're definitely in it for the long haul. We just want to, and also, I want to develop like a long-term solution for our presence here. Historically, it's always been a handshake, and the department's moving towards, you know, having something in writing. And so, Austin Headquarters has drafted up a, a contract, per se, between a county and DPS to provide a quality of life for our troopers here. And well, I want to see if I can send it to you, sir, and we can actually sit down and review it. This is a standard template that every other county has participated in. And we want to kind of just, you know, paint a, you know, have a, some, some more of a, more concrete agreement with Goliad County. So I would like to entertain that, sir, with you and the Commissioners in regards to putting that in, in writing, sir.
So if you'll email me that contract, we'll, uh...
Yes, sir. I've got it right here, sir, in draft form. I presented it to you, and then...
Thank you.
I can put it in a red folder, very, very important.
We'll, uh, we'll have a look at it. I'll share this with the Commissioners, and we'll...
Outstanding.
We'll put it on the agenda for next go-around, and...
Outstanding. I want to thank you, sir, Commissioners, for allowing me to speak on behalf of the department, because at the end of the day, we are in this together, you know? And we want to definitely do right by you, and, and we just ask that we have a place to hang our hat and to conduct our operations, current operations and future operations. Thank you.
I'd just like to add, too, that we'd like to keep your presence in Goliad County.
Outstanding.
We've had it here over the years for a long time, as well as the state game wardens. So we'd like to maintain that, that presence.
And we did show, we did show up in force tonight, so we are here, which, which shows that actions speak louder than words, and we want to have a command presence here for a very long time. Yes, sir.
Yes, and I'd like to say, too, that, that your presence is, is welcomed in this county. And I've talked to a lot of citizens, and they, they're happy that you, that you want to be here, and we want you here. So anything we can do, we're gonna try our best to, to do it.
Outstanding. And like I said, anything from me, gentlemen, sir, feel free to reach out, and I'll be able to be that enabler for Goliad County in regards to how we support DPS here.
We, uh, we also heard that y'all had some expectations, maybe to open a driver's license office here, maybe once a week, once every other week.
Sir, that's above my pay grade, but I'll take copious notes and take it back to Headquarters and say, "Hey, Goliad County wants a DL office here." So that's definitely, but that's, that's upon you as the taxpayers to reach out to your state reps or state senators, "Hey, we want this." And of course, as you know, stuff runs, rolls downhill, right? So, so definitely, it's in your best interest to be proactive and get that ball rolling in the right direction. But I'll take notes, and I'll speak to DL leadership back in San Antonio, our Headquarters, and kind of put that bug in their ear, sir, and move forward with that.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for coming.
So I'll get those, that contract distributed to the court, and we'll take no action, and we'll put it on the agenda when it's appropriate.
Okay.
But, but we are gonna go ahead with the repair. You're gonna get some bids on the repair on the, on the roof.
We're gonna go out for bids on, uh... On some roof for the...
So we'll get a, we'll get an architect to, we're not just gonna get bids on, on, on a person that's gonna put a roof up, but we're gonna actually get somebody to, to draw up some plans on what, what we actually need. Which I, I, I'm concerned that a, an erector could put a roof up, that's for sure, but we probably need some sort of architect or some sort of plan on exactly how it's gonna be done. So I'm hoping that's also gonna be included in that, Commissioner.
I, I mentioned to Commissioner Edwards that the most important thing to me is getting an engineer involved to get a wind load established for that structure we're gonna build on top of it.
Correct, okay.
And we want it to look, we want it to look good as well, so yes, is the answer. On one of those bids, we had, it had engineering, an extra price if we wanted it engineered, so that, that one bid did show engineering. All right, we've pretty much got that covered, so we'll move on to the next one.
Well, wait a minute, Judge. They, uh, we got the bid for this, from, from these two folks back in October 5. And on that one, she said, the low bid said they could give us stamped engineer drawings for $3,000 extra over that. But after talking with her last, last week, the price of everything has gone up more. She's saying we could be up as much as 20% more than that bid, so it's appropriate to, to go out for fresh bids.
We're gonna have to go out for bid, there's some question. All right. Do we need to table that, or what are we gonna, just know? Well, we're taking no action. Okay. All right. Item number eight is discussion of the RES Weezer Solar Facility. We'll give you a brief overview of that facility. We had a conversation with Bob Bass and the owners of RES, or the representatives of RES, this morning in an executive session. I guess the, the high points of it are, is that it's gonna be a, about 150-megawatt facility with the battery storage, the solar panels, and a removal of the land out of agricultural into commercial. It's about a $200,000 a year net gain for the county. Commissioner Bruins had, has had some calls. Concerned about the aesthetics. Ms. Hanselman is concerned about the environmental. I can assure you that we will cover all that in a public hearing, and everyone will have an opportunity to say their piece. RES is one of the leaders in the industry. They have a reputation for finishing what they start. And he had high expectations that this one would, would move forward. Having said that, there's no guarantees that any of these projects will be finished. If you don't throw your hook in the water, you'll never catch a fish. So that's what I've been trying to do, throw hooks in the water. And this is just the latest one. We have another one that we will probably be speaking about very soon. It's gonna be located out near the plant. And it'll mean more revenue to the county as well. Y'all were all in the meeting? Commissioner Morales?
I'm good.
Commissioner Edwards?
Well, I will say that of the three solar projects that we've, the two that we've given abatements to, and this one, this one seems to be the most promising to actually come about. But I, I understand that the location is not ideal, so we've got some, we've got some concerns with the public needs to let us know what they think about it. But I think if any of them, we're gonna come about, from what I've heard this morning, this would be the one.
Commissioner Brumby?
I was not involved with the, with the first two, but the, the RES sounds like it's a, a, a project that would certainly benefit the county. And I'm, I'm waiting to hear some things, some more things from them and whatever, and have the, the open meeting where we have a public comment.
Commissioner Bruins? I stress to this company that the last two solar fields are in, where no people live hardly, and, and in the, in the country, in the brush. This one's right along highways, a lot of long homes. And we really, we really gotta take the concerns of the landowners around there. I don't like telling a landowner he can't do anything that's legal on his property, but you gotta keep your good neighbors, and, and it's gotta be safe, so... So we'll, we'll find out more about this. Thank you. Is there anything else on, on this one?
No, sir.
Move on to the next one. All right, there's no action to take there. The Tulsa Solar Project, located way out on 883. We've all been disappointed that it hasn't come to fruition. They applied for an extension in December, a one-year extension. The extensions are written into the body of the contract. They are a guarantee. As a matter of fact, Mr. Bass said that they don't even have to ask us... ask us for those extensions. What he told us was that they ask out of a courtesy to the county. I received a request in December for the extension. I acknowledged their request and that was the end of it. So they got pushed out a year. Tulsa is in the process of looking for a buyer. They are not in default. They have other active solar operations going as we speak. They are also in the crypto business and we'll see where that goes. That is a $300 million project and it would net the county a good bit of money through the pilot project, through the pilot program. When we put out the welcome mat for solar providers, which is what I set up, what I was gonna do when I initially ran for office, we'd never, never entertain a solar provider in Goliad County as far as I'm aware. I could be wrong about that. And we've had, we've had several come to, to the contract stage. We've had several that didn't get out of the, of the talking stage and we're just hopeful that this project will come. We hope that they'll find a buyer. So there's really no action to take, we're just giving you an update. Now on the Peregrime, which is item number 10. Peregrime was developed by a company called Prime Solar. They're out of Colorado, they're one of the leaders in the business and for whatever reason, they decided that they would look for a buyer and they sold it to a company called Con Ed, one of the largest companies in the world. I'm very hopeful that Con Ed's gonna carry this to fruition. They have also asked for that extension, but they intend to make up for lost time. It's a great location and right now, they're not seeing any roadblocks. What are roadblocks? Heritage trees, pipeline right-of-ways, drilling sites that change fairly often and the new drilling contractor, operator decides that they want to change the location of the drilling pads. So what is happening on the surface directly, directly affects where they can put their, their solar array. So those are just some of the things that can affect timing and whether or not it makes sense to go ahead with the project. I know for sure that with Tulsa, I'll back up just a second, I know for sure with Tulsa, they changed operating companies right in the middle of this entire venture that they got into and the new drilling company wanted to develop different locations for the, for the pads, which meant a whole nother set of roads, access, everything that goes with it. So there's more to it than just deciding that we're gonna build the solar here and you put 'em up and the next day you're making electricity. There's a lot more to it than that. So with Peregrime back on them, I'm very hopeful that they, they're gonna move forward because that's Con Ed and that's a huge company and they know what they're doing, they have a very good track record. So we'll see. Mr. Morales?
Don't comment, sir.
Mr. Edwards?
Well, you know, the thing that concerns me on, on these last two is that we're not really seeing a lot of going on. I understand that there's been some changes on the Tulsa. You knew about this in December and we're just now hearing about the extension. Whether you have the right to give, give the, the extension or not is debatable, but my, my, what I would ask is in the future, you would be a little more respectful to the, to the court and, and keep us updated a little better on what's going on.
I believe I sent out a notice, I'll, I'll check that. As I said, this is a rubber stamp, it's a guarantee. They do not even have to ask us to do this, that's what Mr. Bass told us this morning. He said that they can just decide they're gonna do it. I've been accused of doing this illegally and I believe the term was being a despot and seasoned authority that wasn't mine. Nothing could be farther from the truth. I've worked very hard to bring in an industry to this, this county. I am in talks with a crypto mining operation that wants to take over the power plant right now. We've been working on it for a good while. And if we could land a crypto mining operation, what would that do? It almost sounds like pie in the sky, but if we get the right crypto mining operation in there, they tell me that it could yield Goliad County nine million dollars a year. Well, that's only our entire budget, so that would be a good thing. We could lower our taxes and be set for a good while. Don't know if it's gonna happen, but if you don't throw the, throw the lure in the water, you're never gonna catch anything. So I have attempted to do that, I will continue to, to do that and I welcome any of the Commissioners that want to try to bring in some business to put their foot in the water and give that a try. So if there's nothing else from anyone?
Well, I'm like Commissioner Edwards, if, if these companies email you, I would like for you to forward these emails to where they're at and where their standing is, what, what their delays are, what their changes are, so, so we're informed on...
Well, here, here's the issue with that. Loose lips sink ships and to put out in the public particulars of what negotiations are occurring is probably not the best idea for this county.
I don't think we're the public, we're not the public, we're the, we're the five voting governing people over this county.
I understand that. I get into these things, I go out and fish for them, I go out and try to develop them and find people that are capable of doing this kind of work and I encourage every one of y'all to try that, but that's what I do. And when I have something to report, I'll report it. But when I'm out talking to prospective developers, there's no need in talking about it because it's just talk. So...
I'm just saying if, when they send you information, we would like to be involved in that, we are the court.
When they send us information, we'll certainly share it, but there's a lot of talk that occurs before any, any information changes. And the crypto mining is a, is changing almost daily. The one good thing we have going for us is Governor Abbott is trying to use the crypto mining operations to upgrade the grid. And his, and his plan is, as Mr. Klapsaddle said, he uses a tremendous amount of electricity and in the case of a, a freeze or, or a hot spell, that electricity may be needed to keep homes and businesses heated or cooled. And this is a part I'm a little dubious about, that the crypto mining operations who are doing millions of dollars in a short period of time are willing to just say, "Okay, we're not gonna run for a few days until this coal snap goes through." I'd have, I'd, I'd need to see a little more than a handshake on that. Also, a lot of the, the crypto miners are the hail from China and I have an issue with that as well. I haven't worked through that in my mind. I just haven't got there yet and maybe that's a personal issue, but I'm, I'm gonna be real hesitant to jump in without having all the i's dotted and the t's crossed. So yes, the crypto mining is our answer. It'll bring much more money than the power plant does. At present, the power plant pays one million, one hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars a year. If the solar fields work out, we would be in excess, these three, we would be in excess of eight hundred thousand dollars in total revenue. Something is being done. We're, we'll be at eight, we need to get the 1.158 in order to break even. So we're gonna continue to plug to see if we can't get more of these, these operations in-house. That's really all I've got, I just, we wanted, we wanted to give you, we wanted to give you an update and let you know that this is not watermelon talk, it's real. We're doing our best to get these things in. As I mentioned when Mr. Bruins asked a couple of meetings ago why nothing's happening, not only are the surface, the changes on the surface, operators and trees and pipelines and things of that nature, not only they influence it, but all the solar panels are made in China. They just are. I don't like that part either, but whether I like it or not doesn't change the, the facts on the ground. So I'm told that the supply chain for these is loosening up. I've been told that some of them are being flown in now as opposed to put on a cargo ship and float it across the pond. So we're gonna keep on doing our best, see if we can't take care of the financial issues we have in Goliad County because if we have a, if we take a one, 1.158 million dollar hit, we're all gonna notice it in a big way. So that's what I got. With that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved, Judge.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned, thank you.